Recording in progress.
Excellent, synchronized. Good morning, Dyton. Welcome to the Town of Dyton Plan Board Regular Meeting, being held this Wednesday, November fifteenth. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. By way of reminder, this is a public meeting, being video and audio recorded for cable broadcast. To confirm, the next meeting will be held on Wednesday, December sixth, 2023, same time, 7:00 PM. And first order of business on the agenda is to review, act, and discuss, or act, review, discuss, act. On Hunter's Hill subdivision, map twenty-one lots eight, nine, thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four, sixty-eight, seventy-three, seventy-four, seventy-five, seventy-eight, seventy-nine, eighty, eighty-one, eighty-two, eighty-three, eighty-four, one-twenty-one, and one-thirty. And map twenty-two lots six, tac two, eighty-five, eighty-six, eighty-seven, and ninety. And re-excavation of conservation subdivision plan. The applicant present? Good evening.
Good evening. Lee Castignetti, representing the applicant Longbuilt Homes. We were here before you, late last year, and got the approval for the subdivision and had the plans endorsed. And as we were getting ready to go to the closing table last January, a couple of title issues arose that took significantly longer to resolve than we had anticipated. And unfortunately, as a result, the endorsement date on the plan got stale. Section eighty-one X of chapter forty-one requires that the endorsement date be no more than six months from the date of recording, so those plans, that set of my lives, we couldn't get the registry to accept at this point. So we simply need the exact same set of plans. There's two plans, actually. If you may recall, there was the subdivision plan, and then there was that one single A&R plan that had that portion, that parcel that was, had formerly been owned by the Town of Dyton that Tony had bought, and that's what enabled us to bring the road through and make it a loop road. So there was that A&R plan and the subdivision plans.
Okay, so before us tonight is really, these are the original findings back from November twenty-eighth, uh, nine, uh, twenty-twenty-two.
Twenty-two, correct.
Twenty-two, yeah, and filed with the clerk on October twentieth, twenty-twenty-two, and as far as I know, Mrs. Easterday, there's no changes to any of the content here.
No.
Nothing I can, nothing that jumped out at me, yeah?
Exact same.
Okay, so are you looking for a six-month extension? What's, what's, how do we normally?
No, just to endorse a clean, a new clean set of plans with a concrete.
Which would reset the six-month window. Got it, okay, effectively, same thing, yeah. An extension by a new set of plans.
And I have, I did take a look at on these, on these plans. I did put in, just in case you didn't have an immediate record to it, they have it set up for the date of, date approved, and the nine-twenty-one-twenty-two is the date that was in. I have a copy of that, that section of that plan, if you want to see it, that, that's what the...
Yeah, we got the, we got the twenty, the, we got the twenty-sixth on the findings. Is that, or actually, let me look at the text here.
It was nine-twenty-one, it was on the subdivision plan. It was approved, so I'm sure that that...
Got it, okay.
And then there was twelve, seven-twenty-two on the A&R plan, and I am sure that that on both plans.
Very good. Thank you for that. I'm just looking at the findings here. Oh, the nineteenth is, no, September nineteenth is when we had, last arrived. And the public hearing was closed on September twenty-fourth. All right, I have to get all the way to the third paragraph. I was looking through all the dates. Yeah, so that, it, all those dates jive with what we have here. So, anything else?
No.
Have a discussion here? All right.
It looks, it looks like we're ready at the title insurance company. These, these are a couple of cleanup items that the title insurance company has, you know, had brought up.
Okay.
Looks like we'll be closing.
Okay.
Keep your fingers crossed, but by the end of the year.
Okay, thank you.
That's a goal, starting construction, beginning of the year.
Excellent, thank you. Gentlemen, do you have any questions for the applicant?
Are you planning on breaking ground before winter?
During the winter.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And have you done any work since the last time we met? You were gonna do something with that model home?
We have not.
Okay.
We have not.
Okay.
Simply because the title problem related to the entire parcel, so we...
Okay, well, you plan on getting work? Because I saw the excavators over there.
Immediately, yeah.
Okay.
Anything else? Jim, since you're here, I'm gonna ask.
Well, it's changed since the last time I was here.
Yeah, nothing's changed. It's the same way I feel. Yeah, I don't have any concerns. Nobody on the board here, technically, Mr. Aguirre is here as well to comment. Not hearing any concerns, like entertain a motion to, are we approving these?
Just agreeing to endorse them.
Agree, is it agreement to endorse, Mrs. Easterday?
Yeah.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made? Motion made in second. Any further discussion before we take it to a vote? Hearing done? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No nays, no extensions. Motion carries. Thank you. Now we sign. Is it, is it camera on?
You know that's what you like to do.
It's a good, it's a good marker.
Yep.
You need to make sure it's not dry. Taking the creases out? Oh, storage facility. That's the next one, Elm Street. Can I take them out of order? Like of bathroom facilities? I didn't catch a bathroom facility thing. There's definitely no parking in seven spots. I think that's a problem. That's why Jim's here. Because he's the only one that can approve a waiver for parking. That's three total. Yeah, one. Sorry. Current processing going on here.
Three of them, huh?
There, there, there. Somebody forgot.
I signed it.
Oh, it's four? It's three, right?
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
Oh. Like, I only see three. It's three drawings. So confused. Oh, it's a, it's a break. Keep us guessing. I should compare my signature to that one. Well, doesn't look anything like that one.
No.
This is all over here, right? Whoops, it's over here. Yes, all three is in a different place. This one's over here. Yeah. Yeah. Makes sense.
Three?
Three more, bro. Every single one of these is in a different place. This one, this one, and that one. I want to be held accountable for taking Kerry's marker.
All they're trying to do is just to confuse us, that's all.
Just so happens it's the only place to fit, I guess. Careful Kerry counts, counts her markers when she's done.
See?
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's, it's bottom line, bottom line. Probably a number of spaces here.
And before you start calling me a thief, hold that.
Well, that's the protocol, right? You're late for the meeting, you buy the donuts.
We did buy the beer.
Yeah, get any donuts on camera. All righty, I think we're good. Great.
You don't have to wait for me, you can...
Okay, all right. Okay, next order of business is agenda item four-eight-two, site plan review for Zero Elm Street LLC. Zero Elm Street, map twenty, lot eighty-four, tac four, storage facility. Good evening. Good evening.
Record now is eight minutes. Oh, yeah, present.
Uh, it's not a public hearing, just a site plan. Site plan review.
So, property's located off Elm Street and corner of Hillcrush Drive. It's known as SS map twenty, lot B four dash four. So this is the locus here, he has Elm Street and he has Hillcrush Drive. Um, it's approximately twenty-seven point eight acres in size and with approximately about seventeen point three acres of it being uplands. And this is the existing conditions, man. Uh, so the property's located in the industrial zone, and there's no industrial zone in the district. It's not located in any flood zone. It's not located within any natural heritage endangered species areas. The wetlands that you see on the plan were delineated and approved under what's called Order of Resuscitation Delonation by the Conservation Commission. So they reviewed and approved the line that you see before you. That's valid for three years, and then we can ask for extension if need be. Uh, the topography on property ranges from elevation one-thirty-two down to elevation thirty-two. So this is the, this is the south side, Hillcrush. This is the north side, ranging from elevation one-thirty-two at the highest point in Hillcrush down to thirty-two. Literally a hundred-foot elevation change.
It's a big drop, yeah.
Yeah, it's, but again, it's a big piece of property, so... So, so the proposal. This is a, a new version of the layout. The proposal is for sixty by one-hundred-and-twenty-foot storage building, self-storage building. Seventy-two hundred square feet in size. It's gonna be placed on a concrete slab. And it has, the proposal is for twenty, twelve-by-thirty-foot units. So it's ten on either side. As you can see, the, yeah, but it's designated by the dash line that are coming in the building, yeah. And it'll be accessed by overhead doors, like you would typically see in a, in a standard, you know, storage unit facility.
Okay.
Uh, the entrance that you see off Elm Street is twenty-four foot wide. Pavement with twenty-foot radii. And flares out to thirty foot wide, which then accesses around the entire building. There, we are proposing four nine-foot by nineteen-foot parking spaces in the rear.
Here.
Which we can go over after. Lighting is proposed to be the wall pack, the wall-mounted lights on the building with the down, with the shield facing downward to ensure that we don't have any light shedding onto any abutting properties or onto the road, which is, which is important. Stormwater. This is kind of more of a meat and potatoes with the design. Uh, stormwater will be controlled via deep slump hoodie catch basins, then go into a drain manhole, and then which then discharge to what's called sediment for bay, which basically, when the water comes in, it's turbulent, it settles it, takes out all the total suspended soil, is anything else, and then it ultimately discharges to what's called a storm, a constructed stormwater wetland or basin. It has wetland vegetation in it. It acts as a really good treatment media. Typically, conservation commissions really like it. It's really good for treating and cleaning stormwater. The base has been designed to handle up to a hundred-year storm event, which is seven inches in a twenty-four-hour span. Also proposing six cul-de-sac remits. These are sub-surface remits, both big. Probably seen stacked on the side of the road before the big yellow half moon circle plastic chambers. They get snapped together. You put them on the parking lots on a lot of different commercial uses. They're, they're very strong. You put stone around them, and then we're using that to recharge the roof. So all the stormwater from the roof is going to be directed directly, directed into those chambers, and then recharge back into the ground. Erosion control. And all of this is more for, I wanted to kind of go through a brief of, of it, but this is more geared towards conservation, but it's also going on, on the construction end of it as well. Erosion control is going to be silt sock, which is going to be placed all down, you know, in the middle work. So as you can imagine, so like you talked about, it's all sloping from high gear to low gear. So all this downbreathing and area gear from the disturb is going to be encapsulated by silt sock, which we provided the detail for. An anti-tracking pad, construction entrance, which could be riprap, is going to be placed at the entrance. It's going to be the width of the entrance, so twenty-four foot by fifty foot. Basically, that just knocks off the dirt and the construction vehicles during construction, ensure that nothing gets out on Elm Street. And then anything that does get, there's a maintenance plan that basically talks about the contractor having to go out and check the, check the road and ensure that there's no debris out on the road every day, and ensure that it's clean and kept, you know, for public safety. Silt saw, uh, silt, excuse me, silt sacks. Let me read my own writing. Silt sacks are going to be placed in all the catch basins during construction. Those are just, basically, if anybody's seen them, they're just like a big sack that goes in the grate and it captures any, when the site's not stabilized, a lot of silt will wash in. We don't want it to get into the, to the pipes that have been installed or into the basin if necessary. So those are, those are kept in there until the site is fully stabilized. To clean them, you basically pop them, pull the sack out. If it's really bad, you replace it completely, or you just dump it out and you, like, off into a truck and get rid of it, and then just put it right back in. Depends on, you know, how filthy it is. The one thing I did notice when I was going through these plans, like, every time I do this, I could review it for twenty hours and still find something that I missed. I did not put a dumpster on it. I will have, and again, we know that this is going to get sent out for review. We understand that, and we know there's going to be revisions to the plan. I did not add one. I planned on putting one on a concrete slab that would be, you know, with privacy fencing, with a gate.
Oh, as a, as a permanent fixture at the...
Permanent fixture, absolutely, yes. So that will be placed as well, to ensure that, you know, there's no access for the public. Obviously, we don't want that, and we don't want it to, you know, the client doesn't want it to, to not look good either, so it's gotta be, it's gotta be safe. So my client, which is Don Eman, he has his own plumbing company. He plans on using this for his own supply. That's the, that's the intent for this. You know, and again, he can speak on it more if you have more questions, but basically, he would be, he'd bring in his own material. His guys would come in, wrap the material, and, you know, whatever they need for that job, and, and go off to the job and then, you know, restock as necessary. So that's the intent of this. The, the, the use is a by right use, you know, through the zoning, under, under the industrial zone. It is by right for storage. So again, we're, we're before you. This is being submitted to, it's already been submitted to conservation. We had our first hearing. There was no, didn't seem to be any major issues at all. There was really no big concerns. It's just gonna get sent out to Weston Sampson, I believe is also your consultant, that it's gonna get sent out to, and will do that joint review of the notice of intent as well as the, as the site plan review and zoning and stormwater.
I think it's already with them, right, Kerry? Yeah.
Perfect. So we, again, obviously, these plans don't reflect any changes yet, but we plan on, if we get any changes, whatever changes are asked for, we'll provide and, you know, present to you.
Okay. All right. Anything else?
Happy to answer any questions the board has?
I just have a basic ignorance question. You mentioned the cul-de-sac chambers on the plan previous there. Terminology used was recharging the roofs. What is, what does that terminology mean?
Oh, so, so, you know, if you add roof gutters, they're gonna be piped directly into them.
Okay.
And then the idea is to recharge the groundwater. So what happens is, is they go into these pits. Think of it like a leaching pit. They're basically, I think they're, they're four foot wide by three foot tall, roughly.
Okay.
Big, but they're, and they're half moon, they're very, very strong. And then you wrap stone, you filter fabric around the top of them, and then you put stone around them. They get this end caps on them, and then you put the pipe into it, and then it just, as a storm comes, surgiages that system, goes into the ground, and then anything that it can't handle on the roof leader that's going down to, into the ground, you put a wide connection for an overflow. And that's, and then what would happen then is it would just overtop, it would go into parking lot, to the parking area access, and then it would ultimately get back into the basin.
Got it.
So it's all, it's, it's just another way of recharging the groundwater as well as treating the stormwater as well.
Okay, so this just gives you an alternate place to dump large volumes?
Exactly.
Okay. All right, got it. Um, I, I know my only concern when I read these, and there'll probably be others when the consultant comes back, but was the number of parking spaces. And I know that, you know, reading the bylaws here, I guess it can either fall under warehouses and similar uses that normally visit but a general public, although this is visited by the, I guess, paying public, not really general public, or any other non-residential use or any use involving combination of functions similar to or listed therein. Number of spaces says here, as determined by the building commissioner by application of the ratios above. Ratios above say one spot per two-hundred feet, so two-hundred square feet should be well below that.
Of course.
So that's why Mr. Aguirre is here to specifically address that, so...
Understood. And I can, I can speak on that a little bit. Obviously, Mr. Aguirre, it's, it's, you know, it's completely, we'll discuss, but...
Yeah.
I've designed many of these. I actually did one in Lakeville, by the Lakeville Hospital. It's a seventy-two thousand square foot, seventy-two thousand square foot storage facility, three stories. And there's nine parking spaces there. I, it's right near my office, where my office in Lakeville, our main street is. And at any time, there's maybe two vehicles there, and what they typically are, U-Hauls. A lot of times, they're trying to rent them. Most people, what happens is they drive to the bay, they unload, and then they leave. And that's, and that's what happens, is real, this doesn't have it. So the other thing I didn't mention is, this doesn't have any utility other, it has no utility at all. It's, it's literally just, it's a cold storage. So there's, there's no office, bathroom, there's no access for that, for the public. It's just a cold storage facility.
Not climate-controlled?
It's not being climate-controlled, right?
No, okay.
Yeah, no, it's just, just a, it's just that for his, you know, for his interior, that's it.
Okay. It'll help to keep the, any, any wildlife out, too. That's usually what winds up happening. Yeah, if you're climate-controlled, things move in in wintertime. Okay. Gentlemen, any questions for the applicant before Mr. Aguirre?
The issue of no bathrooms. That's pretty unusual on something like that.
Yeah, in a, in a storage facility that does not have water in it, code does not apply to bathrooms. It's not a public building, it's a private building. It's cold storage, it's only for inventory. There's no employees, that I understand, in the main facility. The employees come and go. I understand any concern. Employees go to the bathroom with them, wherever they go. That's something I tend to address during the building process. However, the building itself does not require a bathroom to be on-site.
Good that there's a lot of wood.
One experience for me as well, because I, I didn't realize that either. It was, to be honest with you, because everyone I've ever dealt with, as far as, you know, has always been climate-controlled and what have you. But it is, it is, after reviewing it with Mr. Aguirre, it's, it's absolutely true.
Okay. Anything else?
No.
James?
Good to go, next presentation.
Thank you.
Really appreciate picking up a dirt out on the road. That's big, because a lot of projects we have that go on, you don't hear that from the developers, right? They're tracking all kinds of mud, dirt out into the streets. We've had some instances where, you know, it's a problem.
This is a unique situation because it's surrounded by residential.
Right.
You know, it's an industrial zone, but it's surrounded by residential, so we have to be extra cautious on that, you know what I mean? So it is important, we understand that.
Yeah. Now, you're the first guy ever to say that, you know, in the presentation. Nobody else is really considering it, so thank you.
No problem, thank you.
Anything else, Woody?
That's it.
Good. Mr. Aguirre, any other concerns? Good with the spot, parking spot situation?
Yeah, I have some questions and concerns that you did.
Yeah.
Understanding the operation of facility. Certainly, we can't predicate on what the building could use going down the road.
Right.
It's the here and now.
Got it.
If there were a change in the building in the future, then we'd be back for a supplemental review. We know we'd address the parking if that was a concern.
Yeah.
But right now, the proposed use, I think the parking is more than adequate. I, I agree with Mr. Zagar. I don't think we'll see more than a car there at a time, if that.
Okay, glad to hear. No other concerns, Mr. Aguirre, at this time? No, okay. Yeah, very well, well-done presentation and very impressive design. Thank you for all the attention to detail, there's a lot here. And definitely, I definitely appreciate that.
No problem, thank you.
Gentlemen, entertain a motion to break tap. Yes, ma'am.
We have to wait for the peer review.
We have to wait for a peer review?
Yeah.
To continue this?
We don't have to vote on anything now?
We have to vote to continue.
We have to continue.
Oh, to continue.
All right, so we heard from the, from the peer review engineer, they are expecting to have a review back by the first of December? So we're meeting again on the sixth?
Sixth.
So we have room in the agenda on the sixth?
I think we do.
Okay, all right, so...
As soon as I get that peer review report, obviously, I'll...
Yeah, there'll likely, there'll likely be some back and forth.
That's, so, yeah, I'll do, obviously, that's gonna be pushing it a little bit tight, but I'll do everything in my power to get it done. As long as there's nothing major that I, you know, I can't address in that amount of time. There may be a few things that we have to come back in front of the committee, in front, excuse me, in front of the board about, just to discuss anyway. But that being said, you know, absolutely, we will, that's great that we'll at least have, we have, you know, close to a week to, to be able to address. And hopefully, it's nothing major and we can deal with it.
You planning on breaking ground this year before winter?
It's getting cold.
So you all know I've been, I mean, patience is not my strength. I thought most businesses...
So you all know, I've been, I mean, patience is not my strength. I thought most businessmen, I don't know how that works sometimes. It's not my strength. So this has been a year plus going. I thought maybe, but I think logically we're gonna wait till the spring. I think we get through the winter, get all our approvals, make sure everything is up and up. I think really for me, it's probably, you know, the storage is important. You know, they mentioned that, so really what happened to me was I outgrew, I fixed the top ten pin and we got storage and fabrication and we outgrew it. And so this is really building products and storing up.
Right.
That's it. So there's nothing else in there. There's no people working in there. It's truly storage. And really the COVID, the COVID issue started at all too, when we had problems with products. You know, if you could get your hands on product, and that, that was, that was a key component, so. A lot of that was based upon that. So truly, just as Niall said, storage, product storage.
Right.
You know, and we thought honestly, dividing the building into storage facilities, we've all had garages, so you have a 7,000 square foot garage and it's all piled and piled. I'm able now to take the product and pile it per job, per storage container. So I've divided the jobs as well for the customer and for the drivers, so they're picking up, one and picking up the other. So it was a way to divide it strategically. And all we needed was cold storage.
And a lot of it don't disappear.
Well, you know, no one steals BBC pipe, thank God, so far. You know what I mean? So far, so good.
All right. That's good.
Might be marking for that soon.
No, no problem.
All right, um, all right, so we're gonna wait till we're back on the first and hopefully it'll be sooner or, or, you know, and it'll be some back and forth. So that being said, and since Mr. Cunha didn't hear any of this, I'm not sure, he should probably abstain.
I will, I will vote.
Okay, but, you know, anyway, make a, somebody can make a motion to continue this to the December 6th regular meeting.
Make a motion to continue this for December 6th, regular meeting.
In second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, see you on the 6th then. Figure it out between now and then.
Have a great night.
Thank you, you too.
Thank you.
Welcome. Okay, happy Thanksgiving. Yeah, it happens.
Bummer.
All right, next item on the agenda is the approval of the meeting minutes for November 1st, 2023.
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the minute for.
November 1st?
November 1st, 2020.
Second. All right, wait till Kerry's, you got Kerry's attention. She's, she's occupied. She's taking notes. I'm gonna wait for her to carry it up, see what's going on. There's parallel processing going on here. There's a lot going on, man. Thanks, gentlemen. Good night.
Bye, Jerry.
Good night.
All right, so we have a motion by Mr. Figurito in the second, by Mr. Higgins, to approve the meeting minutes for November 1st. No problem. I figured I'd wait. You were chatting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. My eyes, nice work. Mrs. Easterday, do we have any correspondence?
We do not.
Any public input? Input, input?
I heard the bear, my lord.
What, the deer?
Queen bear.
The bear. I thought maybe there was a squirrel in the tree. All right, uh, nothing further? Somebody wanna make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
All in favor? Aye. Good night.